The regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community School Board of Education is now brought to order on Monday, June 26, 2017 at 7:00 PM. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone. Your attendance this evening shows your interest in local education and is greatly appreciated. Moving on to item number 291.17, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 292.17, roll call of attendance, please, Ms. Hines. Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Hines, present. Ms. Madison?
Present.
Ms. Medel?
I'm here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Let the record show 7-0. Okay. Thank you. So, what I, right before we move on, I need to, I would like to make the motion that we make an amendment to the agenda. We have to re-sign our school board mission statement since Mr. Cox joined us in January. He hasn't had a chance to sign it. So, we want him to sign if he believes in the same things we do. And we're not going to force you to sign it.
You did, I do.
Okay, and we're going to add that to item number 298.17, item B. And I need to... So moved? Moved by Mrs. Madison?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Medel. Any discussion? Okay, all in, we'll just do a "I," all in approval? Aye. Any nays? Motion carries? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number 293.17, presentations, Dr. Hamala?
Yes, thank you. We have two presentations tonight. The first one, Jim Larson Schidler will introduce. It's an award that his department is going to receive.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Hamala. Tonight, we have Steve Azikian here with us in his role as president at MSBO, Michigan School Business Officials, to present Gino Montane and Tony Spiezak with the MSBO 2017 Meridian Award. Tony just informed me, this is the third award that we've received since 2010, and the second consecutive year that Gino Montane has received this award. 2010, we won the award for the iSave, which is still going. And last year, we won for Click It and Fix It, which is an app that Gino developed with others in building in grounds to have people identify things that need to be fixed. This year's Meridian Award recognizes Gino for his development of innovative communication methods, distribute information to staff timely, effectively, and efficiently throughout the district. Well, I hope to see Gino back this time next year for a three-peat. With that, I'll turn it over to Steve.
Sure, and I won't steal any of the thunder, but thank you for having me. Thank you for having me here. I'm not, not just here as president of MSBO, but I am excited to be here as deputy superintendent of Wayne Risa, just down the road. So, it's a real privilege for me to be able to present this award again to Gino. It was a year, it'll be, it was 364 days ago that we did this last year. So, I'm really excited to do that. The Meridian Award of Excellence is to recognize outstanding and successful business practices in school districts. And Gino's nomination this year, again, was outstanding and successful, and something that we would like to emulate throughout the state. And we really appreciate his work, the commitment that the district has to doing innovation. And I will let Gino explain what it is, and then I'll give him the award.
Appreciate that. I'd like to thank everyone for allowing me to be here again to, like you gracefully said, to win this year award two years in a row. Working with such a great staff that I have, with Tony Spiezak, Matt Conley and I, we put together this thing called Vision Quest. It allows us to, we purchased a software that had small monitors mounted in the maintenance rooms of all of our buildings. Right now, we can keep our custodians up to date on every day occurrences, emergency shutdowns that we have throughout the district, OSHA regulations, board briefs, meetings, stuff like that, at all times. We can individually send something out to a certain building for attention to just that building or district-wide to all the events, to all of our buildings. So, it's, it turned out to be a great success. It stopped a lot of the phone calls coming into our office about what's going to happen today in our district, somewhat in my building, if there's a sub coming to my building. All that's answered with this software. So, it's really made everyone just up to date with a lot of the information. And we're hoping next year to move forward with something even more unique. And it's going to be kind of fun, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Gino, so congratulations, congratulations again, presenting with this award. And there's a little bit of a monetary award in there too, for you to use in the district. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Item B, please.
Yes, and John Ulbrich will be sharing the instructional plan.
Thank you, Dr. Hamala. Madam President, members of Board of Education, I believe you each have a copy of this handout that was given to you tonight. The rest of the people in the audience will be able to follow on the monitors on either side of the room. First of all, I want to recognize members of the educational team who worked to develop our plan, Erin Baughman and Curriculum, Jenna Mullins for School Improvement, Donna Lacry for State and Federal Grants, Julie Rutherford for Professional Learning, Joe Arben for Assessment and Data, Stan Shakka for Legal Affairs and Secondary Education, Seth Wenzel for Technology, and Charlie Bowe for Special Education. And certainly Cabinet, along with Kelly Bowe and Jim Larson Schidler, have supported our work in developing this plan. When we began, we needed a vision for learning. And that is, we will utilize disruptive innovation to provide personalized learning environment that supports each student as they develop the skills required for life as an independent learner. Just over two years ago, I was granted a fellowship with the Lexington Institute of Arlington, Virginia. Don Soifer, the executive vice president and co-founder of that institute, led a first cohort of fellows, of which I had been chosen. While working with the members of our Educational Service Group, we developed a vision for personalized learning. This had been a passion of mine since the days that the cellphones became a disruptive device in classrooms. There had to be a way to leverage this tool or similar ones to support teaching and learning. Disruptive innovation, then, refers to using something that already exists, but in a different way. Personalized learning refers to allowing students choice and pace, and then the environment becomes anytime and anywhere. We then, as we began to develop an instructional plan, needed a vision for that. So, learning in Wayne Westland Community Schools will be based upon individual student growth. Technology will be leveraged to provide personalized and adaptive learning for each student. Students will progress based on mastery of Michigan educational standards. And infrastructure, technology, curriculum, and assessment will support continuous student access to learning opportunities. At the outset of developing an instructional plan, we needed that vision. It articulates that each student will be able to progress and demonstrate success at a pace that best meets his or her needs as a learner. Digital content will contain formative assessment tools with a gating feature that provides instantaneous feedback to both the students and their teachers. It is important that we realize that this applies to every student, whether he or she is a general education student or one with disabilities. We needed beliefs to guide our work. And these are those beliefs. Every student can learn and succeed. Students learn best when provided choice. Meeting students' social and emotional needs is part of their learning. Data-driven instructional decisions are necessary for students to learn, and students who base, pace themselves learn best. Beliefs are meant to be unconditional. Our personal belief is that the students who grace the hallways of Wayne Westland Community Schools have the same intellectual capabilities of any students, anywhere. And we believe that when we all have this belief, and I challenge everybody to personally think about this, when we all have that belief, our students will compete with anyone, anywhere. Our instructional plan has several components. One of them is the instructional model. We've adopted an instructional model that is the Center for Educational Leadership's 5D+ Instructional Growth Model. And they include classroom environment and culture, student engagement, curriculum and pedagogy, assessment for student learning, and purpose. The district-wide committee of state holders adopted the 5D+ rubric as our model for teacher growth. And staff have already been trained on two of those five dimensions. We will learn about a third one, purpose, later this summer. Our district has decided to roll this out over several years. As a growth, and as a growth tool, will allow teachers across all grades and disciplines to hone their skills. It only made sense, then, to adopt this as a district's instructional model as we will see the dimensions become how we teach in our classrooms. You each have a copy of this, of the pictorial representation of the instructional model. The colors of the pinwheels specifically represent the colors of each of those five dimensions. The teachers are very familiar with these as they work through learning to use this model. And you each have a copy of that. Here. Our instructional plan has another component called curriculum and pedagogy. Our curriculum will be defined, standards to be measured, and applicable assessment tools. It will be rigorous, meaning it will be challenging for students. Supportive, meaning it's adaptive to individual students. Scaffleted, meaning built upon prior learnings and designed for student understanding. Students, then, will be able to self-assess and demonstrate proficiency. Our district will communicate its desire to provide increased opportunities for students to leverage technology to create content and not just be passive consumers. One of the goals of providing personalized or blended learning opportunities for students is that they can begin to take control of their own learning. Our instructional plan includes technology integration. What that means is each student will have a device. Devices will support adopted curriculum resources. There will be seamless connectivity, 24/7 access to their content. It will be adaptive to individual student needs and conducive to a chosen learning management system. A device is that thing which can connect students to web-based content or has content loaded onto it. It must be able to support software applications provided by content providers. Students must have very little interruption to service. They can be connected at all times. The technology is able to be adaptable to the student needs. Finally, a learning management system contains every tool possible and is a necessity. It contains content resources, links to additional resources, a syllabus, assessment tools, grade card integration, and links to professional learning tools for teachers, and much more. Our instructional plan includes professional learning for the professionals in education. Because our instructional model is a 5D+ rubric for professional growth, we have to provide professional learning for our classroom teachers that is readily available to them 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It is personalized. It is digital, diverse, and aligned with their individual growth plans. Teachers still must acquire professional learning as a requirement of continued certification in Michigan. Given that teachers and administrators could be anywhere along a continuum of teaching expertise, professional learning must be diverse, personalized, and readily available. It also must be aligned with the growth model and our instructional model. Our infrastructure and configuration is a critical part of this plan. Our district's configuration must support competency-based, standards-based, or mastery-based learning. Minimal transitions from school to school help students progress through learning opportunities. It is important that student growth and learning is not hindered in any way by bells, walls, or a configuration. Movement through standards will not be measured by grades in schools, but rather by individual student growth. Learning environments will look much different than those which we are accustomed to. Teachers should have the freedom to act as an architect for what a learning environment looks like. Resource allocation and decision-making. The interrelationship among the divisions of business and finance, human resources, and educational services understands that teaching and learning is our primary purpose. Each decision about allocation of resources requires alignment with our instructional goals. And resources include human resources, financial resources, and our infrastructure resources. Every decision will be based upon details of exploration and implementation. The decisions must be rooted in a need to improve upon our academic outcomes. As such, each decision requires that we define an academic outcome, a means for measuring that success, and a plan for a cadence of accountability. And what that means is, we talk about where we're at. We hold each other accountable to do what we said we were going to do, and then we report on it. And finally, an exit plan should we determine that an action is not meeting our expectation. I want to talk for a little bit about the five drivers of digital convergence and what digital convergence is. Those five drivers are leadership, the instructional model, modern curriculum, digital ecosystem, and professional learning, and you've actually heard me mention those already. But our instructional plan will have success when all five of these drivers are fully implemented and operationally aligned with our plan. That is called digital convergence. To be fully convergent, our leadership must consistently communicate and update its visions to meet the needs of the society. The instructional model will be continuously evaluated for relevance and modern needs. Curriculum is updated just in time to meet the expectations and needs of a modern society. Application for that might be that, you know, social studies or history class right now, there's something happening today that won't be in today's textbook. But we need to be able to have access to it right away. A digital ecosystem is a multi-vendor, interactive, and interconnected process to meet the needs, and is nimble enough to be modified. And what that basically means is the way we build a digital structure and the way that we operate and maintain everything that we make available to teachers and students has an ecosystem that can be nimble enough to be modified and updated as requirements come up. And then our professional learning tools and their objectives support that at least 90% of our district's teachers and administrators are able to meet professional and personalized learning goals. Our progress is expected to take several years. We do have a detailed plan for curriculum resource and exploration. In fact, this, this document is supported by several hundred pages of support documents. We have a detailed plan for developing assessment tools. We have a detailed plan for personalized and professional learning. We have a detailed plan for exploring and adopting technology needs. Each will have to be two-pronged and dependent upon infrastructure decisions and potential financial resources. Our plan details the need to provide teaching and learning for staff and students that is based in a 21st century technological society. Though we can do most of our work within our current structure, it will be significantly more successful should we configure differently and provide 21st century learning centers. To reach total converge, digital convergence, we will need all five drivers. Leadership, instructional model, curriculum tools and resources, our digital ecosystem, and professional personalized learning tools to be fully implemented and in a place that we can be innovative. And that's, I think, very, very important. We don't do something tomorrow, and then that's the way we are. We need to be thinking that we have to be innovative. Having said that, we will remain vigilant and ready to make modifications to our plans as necessary. As Educational Services establishes a cadence of accountability, and subsequently Cabinet does as well, we will provide regular reports as to our progress to the members of Board of Education as required. And then finally, and I think this is most important, we must have a culture that supports and features teachers as architects of learning. No other resource is as significant as a highly qualified, highly effective teacher who can both meet the academic and social needs of our students. We must have a culture to provide necessary resources to implement our instructional plan and that understands how to support that, the work that happens inside our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 294.
I'm sorry.
If you have a question, okay.
Mr. Ulbrich, I understand that this is going to be a couple of years out. Did I understand you correctly before it's fully implemented?
That is correct.
All right. My question would become, talking about students moving at their own pace, I'd like a little more detail on that if you could. And how do you marry that with state assessments in moving up, moving us as a district up the ladder and how we perform on state tests?
Excellent question. The thought behind, first, being able to make things adaptable to student, specific student learning needs, and we're talking about right now, is that you, in a given classroom, you may have students in four, five, six different places in their ability to learn the content. If the, if the content is truly adaptable, then each of them will be able to move through that content through the formative assessment process, where the software actually, and I'll give you an example of what gating is. When they're asked a particular question, their ability to demonstrate their knowledge on that particular question would then allow them to move forward. And so, as a teacher, my job would be to facilitate that possibility. Support those who might be behind. Allow those others to move forward and support them as well. So, an example of gating and what I'm talking about, and I've used this in several other settings. If you've ever gone online, for instance, to purchase movie tickets on movietickets.com or whatever, they typically ask you for your email address, and then they ask you to submit it a second time to match it up. We may make a mistake the second time and get one of the characters wrong. It tells you that right away. It's instantaneous feedback for you, as well as whoever it is that's trying to sell you the tickets. Gives you the opportunity, then, to go back and make that correction. That's what the gating feature is. So, it doesn't all of a sudden tell you, you messed up, you can't buy no tickets tonight. So, when the, when the content is truly adaptable, it allows the students to move forward as they're prepared to move forward. And so, where it marries with state assessments, since most of the state assessments now are coming to online type assessments, students will be doing that as a regular matter of their practice in the classroom. They'll be far more prepared, so it isn't like I sit down in front of a, a, a digital device and do that once or twice a year and have to take a test in that atmosphere when I haven't done it before. It'll actually be part of their learning as they go through third grade through 12th grade, and they're tested. They're going to have that same experience working with a digital device and taking the same type of tests and assessments that they would when they take a high-stakes test.
Okay, could I ask you one more question?
Sure.
Let's say, for example, a student at their own pace would be able to accomplish 60% of the curriculum. That, that's where they ended up. That's still failing the class. Yes or no?
The answer would be, no, they're just not done yet. We have these conversations, well, I...
Yeah.
So, we have these conversations all the time in that, I have this question. I ask, why is algebra a one-year program and algebra II a two-year program? When, when algebra I might take a student two years to complete. The idea is that they move through the content as they're able to move through it. Now, what I would say to you is that there'll be a point in time when I'm going to give a mom and a dad or a guardian a set of standards that their child is going to need to accomplish from the time they begin school until they're done with school. And that could mean when you get a diploma, in our typical terminology. Some students may be able to do that in less than 13 years. Others may not get it done for 14 years. But they're allowed to move through the content rather than failing a class and not being able to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got one.
Okay.
Mr. Ulbrich, we talked briefly before the meeting about the importance of teacher buy-in. And we both agree that that, that's an essential, essential part of what we're trying to do here with this new plan. And the idea that we're going to do this over several years seems to me an excellent approach to it. I come from an experience where we had a staff in-service one year, and it lasted for maybe, I don't know, 30 minutes, and then we forgot all about it and went on our merry ways until the next staff in-service came along, and we treated that the same way. This has some, some ability to dig in and to take root and to become something that our teaching staff will, will use in the future. And that's, that's really where it happens, isn't it? It's in the classroom, under the direction of the teacher. So, I see that as a real positive with your plan.
Absolutely. It fits very, very well with the fact that we've adopted the 5D+ growth model for teachers in the classroom. In that, and I mentioned to you for the audience sake, there are 20 teachers that have actually stepped up and after reading multiple scoop articles and whatever, have asked for an opportunity next fall to begin to experiment with this. It's important that if, for us to understand, and this last slide was in there for a reason, teachers need to be able to be innovative and creative in their classroom without fear of reprisal, because something they try new today isn't quite as successful. And the terminology in the technology field is, this is just a first iteration. If it didn't quite go right, modify it and do it somewhat differently. It is a different world. In fact, we need to ask ourselves the kind of questions, what do our students need to learn today, and how do they need to learn it in order to be competitive in the world they're going to live in when they're ready to go into that world? It's a very, very different concept and way of thinking than what we did. They're thinking about the problems they're going to get to solve or be part of when they get older, rather than, I'm going to be this, or I'm going to be that. We have to start thinking very, very differently.
You're right. It is a different world, and in terms of instruction, I think it's a better world.
Well, absolutely. No, no too late.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to voice support. I believe this speaks right to individual learning. It answers the question, Dr. Weaver, that, that you posed excellently. It allows flexibility. It's timely as we look at other assessments we're going to be making down the road for our instructional plan, so very supportive of it. It's, it's innovative and very exciting, I think.
Anyone else? Moving on to item number 294.17, citizens comment, agenda items only. CNO1 will move on to item number 295.17, the consent agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion.
Move.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Mrs. Medel. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Medel? Yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
I caught myself up from missing the last meeting, yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0. Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to item number 296.17, review and approval of human resources items. Mrs. Bowe, and we have quite a few, so we'll start at item A.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, I have the pleasure of recommending for your approval the placement of Mr. Kevin English as assistant principal at Wayne Memorial High School. Mr. English has been employed with the district since 2012 as an ELA teacher at Wayne Memorial. In 2016, Kevin took over the additional responsibility of director of academics for the Champions of Wayne program. Mr. English also serves as a Board of Education member for the Van Buren Public Schools. Mr. English is a certified secondary ELA and history teacher. He has a bachelor's degree in secondary education from the University of Michigan, and he's recently been accepted into two graduate programs, which he will choose one of to pursue his master's degree in his administrative certification.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cox, supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel? Yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. English. And if you'd like, you can go to the mic and please introduce who you have with you as well.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Hamala and Cabinet. I am here tonight with my wife Stacy. She's a second-grade teacher in Belleville as well, so my wonderful counterpart. As a board member near my district, I just know how thankless your jobs are. So, thank you that, for all that you do for our kids and for our staff. I'm honored to accept this position at Wayne Memorial High School, and I look forward to serving our students, our staff, and community. Truly wonderful things are happening there and in the Wayne Westland schools, and I'm thrilled to be a part of that work. So, thank you so much for such a wonderful opportunity.
Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. English, I know I was teasing you when you came in, but I have to say that I think you'll be a great fit over there. I couldn't, you know, out of all the candidates, I, well, I don't really know who all the candidates were, but when I heard your name was there, I was really excited about it. I think that you'll do a wonderful job over there. You've already been doing such a good job, and I think that you'll just take it to that next level, and I'm gonna appreciate you being there.
As all your English students drop their hearts to the floor, because they don't have their favorite guy, so.
Anyone else want to make a comment? Okay, thank you again. Item B, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna turn this to, over to Jill Simmons. Ms. Simmons was the lead negotiator for this association group.
Okay.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
Tonight I am requesting board ratification of the tentative agreement reached with the Wayne Westland Association of Paraprofessionals on May thirty first, two thousand and seventeen. The terms and conditions of the proposed two-year successor agreement will help improve our ability to attract and retain paraprofessionals in three ways. Entry-level steps have been eliminated, increasing the starting hourly rates. Range in compensation for paras advancing to the new step one of the salary schedule is point nine five percent to nine point four five percent. All other paras will receive a sixteen cent hourly increase for the seventeen eighteen school year, and for eighteen nineteen school year, all paras will receive an additional sixteen cent hourly increase. This will help attract talented paraprofessionals to our district and also help us retain our existing talent. For two thousand and seventeen eighteen school year, a fifteen hundred dollar retention bonus for paraprofessional years of service available to all paras who did not advance to the new step one of the seventeen eighteen salary schedule. For two thousand and eighteen nineteen, a retention bonus equivalent to one to five percent of the base salary for each year of service, up to five years of service. And these bonuses will be paid in the form of two off-schedule payments each year of the two-year agreement and will help retain our existing talent. All full-time paras will receive a thirteen hundred dollar bonus, which members may elect to contribute to their health savings account, attack sheltered annuity, or take as a cash option. The bonus will be paid in the form of an off-schedule payment each year of the two-year agreement and will also help retain our existing talent. Additionally, in an effort to improve paraprofessional attendance, an attendance bonus will be implemented for paras who meet defined attendance parameters each semester. The attendance bonus ranges from four hundred to six hundred dollars per semester and will be paid in the form of two off-schedule payments each year of the two-year agreement. Paraprofessional members ratified the tentative agreement on June sixth. If ratified by the Board of Education tonight, the agreement will be effective upon the expiration date of the current paraprofessional agreement, or July first, and expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Madison.
Second.
Supported by Mrs. Madell. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Motion carries. Moving on to item C, please.
All right, thank you. I'm requesting board ratification of the tentative agreement reached with the Wayne Westland Educators Association, or the WWEA, on May twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen. The terms and conditions of the proposed two-year successor agreement will help improve our ability to attract and retain teachers in two ways. Retention of staff. Members on steps will advance a half-step year one and a half-step year two for a full-step increase over the two-year contract period, and a retention bonus will be paid both years of the contract, three thousand dollars per year one and two thousand five hundred dollars in year two. Members will have to complete the school year to be eligible for the full bonus amount. For an attraction of staff, the starting salary of a teacher with a bachelor's degree will increase from thirty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars to thirty-six thousand seven hundred and six dollars year one and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and six dollars year two. Combined with the retention bonuses, the starting annual salary will now exceed forty thousand dollars in year two. An attendance bonus was also put in place for the teachers. Members will have an option to sell back up to five unused sick days per year. The value of the unused days, it varies based on the total number of absences for the year, but the maximum value of the bonus is two thousand five hundred dollars per year, or five thousand dollars over the two-year contract period. I'd also like to share with you some changes that were made to our instructional calendar, which is developed in part from the negotiation process with the association. The new calendar complies with the Wayne County Common Calendar, and it lengthens our school year to a hundred and eighty days of instruction, which is an additional six or seven days, depending on the grade level of the student. We requested permission from the Michigan Department of Education to start school prior to Labor Day on August thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, to avoid extending our calendar year out further in the month of June. We fully anticipate our request will be approved. We've received verbal assurances, but until the waiver is actually processed and received, the seventeen eighteen school year calendar has been released in a draft format on the district's website. EA members ratified the tentative agreement on June ninth, and if ratified by the Board of Education tonight, the agreement will be effective upon the expiration of the current agreement, or August twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, and will expire on August twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Madison.
Second.
Supported by Mrs. Madell. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item D.
All right, thank you, and I'm gonna turn this back to Ms. Simmons, who is the lead negotiator for Local Four.
Okay.
Tonight I am requesting board ratification of the tentative agreement reached with the MEA Local Four on May thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. The terms and conditions of the proposed two-year successor agreement will help improve our ability to attract and retain Local Four employees in two ways. Salary increases are as follows. Custodians will receive half-steps for each year of the two-year agreement. Warehouse, student monitor, and tier-one food service employees will receive full-steps each year of the two-year agreement. The tier-two food service salary schedule will be eliminated over the next three years with hourly increases ranging from seventy cents to a dollar three each year of the two-year agreement. The transportation D-one classification will be eliminated in two thousand seventeen eighteen, increasing all drivers to the D-two classification. All transportation employees will receive half-steps during the eighteen nineteen school year. This will help attract talented employees to our district and also help us retain our existing talent. The retention bonus for MEA Local Four years of service is equivalent to five hundred dollars for employees with zero to five years of service, one thousand dollars for employees with six to nine years of service, and fifteen hundred dollars for employees with ten or more years of service. This bonus will be paid in the form of two off-schedule payments each year of the two-year agreement and will help retain our existing talent. Additionally, in an effort to improve attendance in the transportation department, the existing attendance bonus has been modified. Local Four transportation employees who meet the defined attendance parameters each school year will be eligible for an attendance bonus ranging from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars. This bonus will be paid in the form of an off-schedule payment each year of the two-year agreement. MEA Local Four members ratified the tentative agreement on June twentieth. If ratified by the Board of Education tonight, the agreement will be effective upon the expiration of the current Local Four agreement, or July first, two thousand and seventeen, and expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
At this time, I'll take a motion. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Madison.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Cox. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Motion carries. Item E, please.
All right, thank you. We're not gonna play musical chairs, and I'm gonna turn it over to Rebecca Peck. Ms. Peck was the lead negotiator for both of the next agenda items.
Thank you, Ms. Bowe. Tonight I am requesting board ratification of the tentative agreement reached with the Brotherhood of Specialized Skills, or BOSS, on June second, two thousand and seventeen. The terms and conditions of the proposed two-year successor agreement will help improve our ability to attract and retain skilled trade staff in two ways. One, one hundred percent of this group's structural money went towards the elimination of a tier-two scale, thus substantially reducing the pay differential between skilled trade professionals doing the same or similar work. This eight percent pay increase over the course of two-year, of the two-year contract will allow us to attract and retain talented skilled trade professionals to open positions as well as keep our current talent that are early in their careers here at Wayne Westland Community Schools. And in the second way, retention bonuses for BOSS years of service of one point one four percent to five point seven percent of base salary for each year of service, up to five years. These bonuses will be paid in the form of two off-schedule payments each year of the two-year agreement and will help retain our existing talent. BOSS members ratified the tentative agreement on June second. If ratified by the Board of Education tonight, the agreement will be effective upon the expiration of the current BOSS agreement, or July first, two thousand and seventeen, and will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion. So moved.
Move approval.
Moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Dr. Weaver. Any dis, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item F.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight I am requesting board ratification of the tentative agreement reached with the Wayne Westland Educational Secretaries Association, otherwise known as WESA, on June seventh, two thousand and seventeen. The terms and conditions of the proposed two-year successor agreement will help improve our ability to attract and retain secretaries in three ways. First, our new recruits and secretaries in their first six years of, with the district will experience pay increases through step movement each year of the contract. This will attract talented new secretaries to open positions. The second way is secretaries in their seventh year and beyond will experience scale increases between ten cents and twenty cents per hour. And all, and the third way is all secretaries will receive retention bonuses ranging from two hundred and fifty dollars for those hired after two thousand and thirteen, up to one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars for those hired prior to two thousand and thirteen. These bonuses will be paid in the form of two off-schedule payments each year of the two-year agreement and help us retain our existing staff. WESA members ratified the tentative agreement on June seventh. If ratified by the Board of Education tonight, the agreement will be effective upon the expiration of the current WESA agreement, or July first, two thousand and seventeen, and will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Ms. Peck. At this time, I'll take a motion. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Madison.
Second.
Supported by Mrs. Madell. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number two nine seven point one seven, review and approval business services and finance items, Mr. Larson Scheider.
Thank you, President Walker. First, we have the two thousand and sixteen seventeen amendment that's on page twenty-one of your board agenda, where you have a summary of the budget amendment. Overall adjustments to the general fund budget totaled one point seven million dollars. Keep in mind that budgets are an estimate of the maximum that may be expended and the amount that we cannot legally exceed. There will be areas under budget which I'll highlight in just a minute. First, highlighting revenues. There are a few revenue adjustments of note. Property tax collections and state aid combined will be down three hundred and point three thousand dollars. Property tax collections are actually up, two hundred thousand. Local property tax collections offset state aid, so if one increases, the other will decrease. These amounts combined to total are seven thousand five hundred and eleven dollars per pupil that we received in sixteen seventeen. The increase in property tax represented back tax collections, and the remainder of the state aid adjustment is based on two thousand sixteen seventeen adjustments throughout the year. Miss Lane's revenue, although that's not a large dollar amount, I want to point it out, this will be down forty thousand dollars. This is due to our leisure program, and this is a result of swim programs being canceled for the last part of the spring and for the summer. This was due to the dire pool being out. Repairs are currently being evaluated and expected to be performed in August or September. Career tech will be down one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. It's not actually down. This is, we put money into a grant fund versus the general fund, so once we noticed this, we had to take it out of the general fund. So we have the money, it's just in a different place. The enhancement levy will be down five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. As you know, the levy passed November two thousand sixteen, was projected to bring in eight, three hundred and seventy, or, sorry, three hundred and eighty-five dollars per pupil. Two thousand sixteen seventeen was the first collection year. RISA revised their projections for sixteen seventeen down to three hundred and forty dollars per pupil. RISA is working with local tax authorities to adjust collections going forward. Future collections should total three hundred and eighty-five dollars per pupil. On the expenditure side, any questions on the revenue side before I go to expenditures? Nope? Okay, thank you. Overall budgeted expenditures increased six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. First, there's one item that I want to correct, supplies and capital. The areas increased, they didn't decrease, so that is just a minor change there. The adjust, the adjustments are normal based on staffing adjustments throughout the year. There's just four items, areas that I want to point out. Basic programs, which are K through twelve, it was a net two, two hundred and four thousand dollar increase, or point four percent. This is primarily for retirement FICA and benefits. Added needs, which is the general fund's special needs area, net increase of one hundred and ninety-three thousand, or one point five percent. This is for salary benefits and purchase services. And finally, transportation, net increase two hundred and sixty thousand, which is an increase of three percent. This was for salary benefits and supplies. And an area that I want to point out for going forward is utilities. This was a net increase of almost thirty-six thousand dollars. This was in water and sewer, where we saw an increase of thirty-seven point four percent year over year. Our total expenditures in water and sewer in two thousand fifteen sixteen were two hundred and fifty-nine thousand versus our current year-to-date in sixteen seventeen of three hundred and forty-four thousand, and we have a budgeted amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand. This is a hundred thousand dollar increase over last year due to increases in sewer rates, water and sewer rates. Some potential favorable actual to budget areas, looking at about seven hundred thousand dollars, where I can scan through the general ledger and quickly point out items where we're experiencing a positive for this year. Workers' compensation, our normal experience in budget is around six hundred thousand dollars plus per year. Year-to-date, we've experienced three hundred thousand dollars. We had a mild winter again, thank goodness, well, knock on wood. Gas and electric should be under budget by up to two hundred thousand dollars. And indirect costs from federal grants should total about two hundred thousand dollars, and we don't count these as revenues, we count them as a reduction of the expenditures, sort of just a different way. About three years ago, we had to take them out of revenues and then just, they're counted About three years ago, we had to take them out of revenues and then just they're counted against our expenses. Might not make a lot of sense, but what it's actually doing is lowering our expenditures, but we can't budget negative expenditures. So it's a positive. Overall, our ending 2016 fund balance is projected at $9.7 million, but based on the variances, I expect us to be in the 10 and a half to $11 million range. This will be the second year the district's fund balance is over 5%, which will remove the district from the state's fiscal watch list. This process will be completed once the audit is submitted to the state in October or November.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item B.
Thank you again, Madam President. On page 23 of your agenda is information related to the 2017-18 budget. First, I'll start off with the general fund revenues. Revenues are projected a total of $107.6 million, and they're based on 300 student decline enrollment from 2016-17's $11,371 to $11,071. We're projecting a $7,631 state aid per pupil amount. This is an increase of $120 from our 2016-17's amount of $7,511. We're projecting, again, the $385 per pupil from the countywide enhancement millage. Also, our career tech program is experiencing or has projected 50 FTE increase for next year's programs. Act 18 and Follow That Kid reimbursement is based on negotiated agreements with our union groups. We've increased our salaries, so we've also increased the amount we should be reimbursed. And the final item is actually a loss. It's a state aid. We will lose our 10% amount that we received for Inkster dissolution. This was for four years, and 2016-17 and last year, this totals $160,000. Any questions on revenues?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I've heard something about additional funding for first grade reading, additional funding for high school students 9-12, additional funding for at-risk students. Is this reflected in your numbers?
It is not. No, those at-risk would be a separate fund, and I don't believe that we put that in the increase because when we prepared the document, we didn't have that information yet. And the actual, the amount for high school students will go in. I believe that's about $70,000. We'll adjust that if January amendment. And first grade reading, I think. Third grade. Yeah. Third grade.
Thank you.
Onto the expenditures. The 17-18 total general fund expenditures are projected at $108.7 million, and those are based on retirement notices that we'd received when the budget was prepared. We received 11 teaching staff, and we replaced those with a BA Step 1, about $40,000. Our agreements reached with seven of the eight districts associations. All agreements were settled within board parameters to compensate staff up to the amount above a 5% general fund balance. This will result in deficit spending in 17-18 and 18-19. Contracts are also dependent upon grant funds being able to absorb the increases. Total negotiations for 17-18 and 18-19 represented, to the general fund, $2.2 million in structural increases and $5.8 million in off-schedule increases. Moving on to retirement or MIPsers, the top rate increased from 36.64 to 36.88%. More importantly, the district's share increased from 24.96 to 25.56. This represents an increase of $300,000 to the district as far as retirement costs. The, during negotiations, as I'd mentioned, $5.8 million was off-schedule, so the district will not incur the increase, total increase in salaries for retirement. These are non-retirement eligible expenditures. Insurance, our insurance, life, there was no increase. Long-term disability, there was a 3.6% increase. Dental, 1.7% increase. Health, 9.9% increase. Important thing to point out here is the district only incurs 3.3% increase because we're on the capped amount. This 6.6% will be passed on to the employees as premiums. Vision, right side, went down 10%. Unfortunately, it's only about $200,000 total, so we only save about $20,000. But still, any amount down is good. Enhancement levy built into the 17-18 budget is $1.1 million for instructional, and will an item that I have later in the agenda, $270,000 increase to equal $1.1 million for bus leases and purchases. These were items that we pointed out in the enhancement levy that we're going to fund for the future. Utilities total one, or $2.4 million. This includes additional increase of $40,000 for water and sewer. And we're in the third year of priority-based budgeting. We're also started with GFOA last year, what's called academic return on investment, where we are looking at programs from an effective and cost standpoint. So with that, are there any questions?
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madison.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item C.
Okay. Thank you again, Madam President. Item C is a resolution for a school bus installment purchase agreement. This is for 10 new buses. Again, 25% of the enhancement millage proceeds were designated to the lease or purchase of buses to replace our bus fleet. This will provide the district's students and staff with safe, reliable vehicles. Transportation has identified 10 buses that are in need of replacement in 17-18. Other buses, five were identified in our last state police bus inspection as in need of major repairs. The repairs, the repair costs of these buses exceeded their value. I'm recommending $230,000 for this lease purchase annually to use the full enhancement allocation for the lease of seven special education wheelchair buses and three regular education buses from the 17-18 MSBO bus purchase program. This will bring the annual bus lease purchase amount to the enhancement designated amount for buses of $1.1 million.
Just to clarify, he's on item D.
Oh.
And we skipped C.
Yes.
So we'll do D, but then we'll need to come back to C.
Okay.
Sorry.
No problem.
Okay.
Got excited there.
You did?
He was trying to get through it.
The appropriation before we spend it.
Yeah. Oh, that's true. Sorry.
We can certainly go back to C before we vote on D if you prefer.
Yeah, probably should.
I'm sorry, we're going back?
Yeah, go back to C.
Okay.
And then we'll come back to D.
Well, C is basically just everything that I had mentioned before. We put it in a separate resolution. Yeah. So.
Okay. So do you guys need to hear anything else about C? Okay. All right. Moved by Mrs. Madison.
Second.
Supported by Mrs. Madell. Any discussion? Roll call vote, and this is on item C.
Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Motion carries. Do you need to add anything else with item D about the buses?
Now, if you don't want to.
Does anyone have any other concerns? Okay, I'll take a motion. Moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Mr. Cox. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yep.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Thank you. Motion carries, and I believe you have one more item, item E.
E? Yes, thank you. You know, I do that every year.
It's okay.
I remember last year too, I did it, and the year before, and the year before.
Well, expect it next year too. Don't break your cycle.
You probably will get it next year. Yeah.
You just get excited about buses, that's all.
I do, I do. It's just a great area. It really is. The last resolution that I have is a reimbursement resolution. Administration is developing a timeline for discussion and planning with district stakeholders to create a plan for a November 2018 bond levy. One of the areas we know there is a need is for safe, reliable transportation buses. The enhancement millage does not have the capacity to replace all of the buses, let alone to maintain the district's fleet in the future. This resolution allows the district to replace buses now and when they are needed and reimburse the general fund for the purchase of the buses from a future bond levy.
All right. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madison.
Second.
Supported by Mrs. Madell. Any discussion?
Here.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Just to reiterate something that you said at our finance committee meeting, that we're going to start purchasing our budgets, our buses on a schedule.
Yes.
So that each year, we're going to replace four, five, or whatever is necessary, but it'll be an ongoing thing year after year as opposed to all of our buses needing replacement, which is kind of where we found ourselves in the last few years, isn't it?
Exactly. That's a common, I don't want to say mistake, but it's a common thing for districts to pass a levy or a bond and then go out and buy 100 buses. Not the right way to do it because you have to count on another bond in 10 years, 15 years. But you know, most bonds are for, you know, 20 to 30 years, so you have to overlap the bonds. The way that we're doing it is we have a replacement of eight to 10 buses per year, and we have 90 buses, so you're looking at a, you know, about nine to 10-year replacement cycle. So we're going to have to just continually budget an amount in the general fund once, you know, the bond is gone or the enhancement millage in order to replace buses. Because it actually pays off because instead of doing major repairs, you can do the maintenance items, it's, will be much cheaper eventually.
And I appreciate your plan to lease and buy leases until we get into this replacement rotation that you were just talking about.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Do we?
We need to vote.
Okay. Anyone else had any other discussion on that? And remind me who the, made the motion.
Madison.
Okay. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 298.17, superintendent search process. So, as we all know, Dr. Harmala is going to be leaving the district at the end of August, and so today, we need to have a discussion on who we're going to use for the superintendent search. Last time, we used M A S B. If we do, you know, if we, if you decide you want to go somewhere different, then we'll have to go through the process of doing the RFPs, but, so now I'm going to open up the floor for recommendations, motions, discussions about who we're going to use for the search.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I recommend that we secure M A S B as our search engine.
Do we have a support for that?
Support.
Supported, okay. So we have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Madell. We have a support by Ms. Heinz. Any discussion?
I would just like to mention the possible consideration of looking within. My thoughts are that we've had Dr. Harmala create such a culture here, and we have great talent already within our district who's been working under the direction of what her culture is that she's created. So I kind of like the idea of being able to search within first possibly and see if there's any interest there of someone who could continue what she started and build a, continue a solid foundation for our district.
Okay. Yes, we'll definitely take that in consideration, but we still have to have a search, we have to go through the.
We have to go through.
Through, yeah. So at this time, since we have a motion on the floor, I'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Okay. So, motion passes, and we will start to put that motion, we'll put that into motion starting tomorrow. Moving on to item number 298.17.
I'm sorry, Madam President, that's, that's the total discussion on this. We're not going to talk about schedules or anything tonight.
No. Just was, the only thing we were talking about today was just who we were going to use for the search, and then we'll start the process. We'll contact M A S B tomorrow and go from there. But I did ask for discussion. Was there something else? We've already voted, but is there something else you wanted to add to that?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. So 298.17, item B is what we added to the agenda, and Mr. Cox joined us in January, and before we had, we keep two mission statements up here. We need to re-sign those, and just so a refresher of what we're going to sign, the school board mission statement is, "As Wayne Westland Community School District Board of Education Trustees, we are accountable to uphold our commitment to provide the best education to our students' future. We will accomplish this through fiscal responsibility and by supporting all facets in family and community with the utmost respect, integrity, and transparency." So if everyone still agrees with that, we'll, there's two of them aside, and we'll pass one each way and then back the other way. Here's a pen for that one. Someone want to make some Jeopardy music while we do this, or any type of? And then keep that pen, and we're going to switch.
Are we supposed to give the pens away to someone?
Is that some type of tradition?
Only your, only your name is worthy of that, Mr. Cox.
And what they'll do is they're going to laminate these and make them look nice and hang them back up on the wall so as a constant reminder to us of our commitment to not only ourselves, but to the community. Thank you so much. You guys are one-wheeled oil machines there. Moving on to item number 299.17, finance committee report. Dr. Weaver, I believe you're presenting it tonight?
Thank you, Madam President. Following is a summary of the minutes of finance committee meeting of June 15th, 2017. The committee met on Thursday, June 15th, 2017 at 10:00 a.m. Board members present were Tom Buckaloo, Carol Madell, and Fred Weaver. David Cox was absent, excused. District employees in attendance were Michelle Harmala, John Albrecht, Kelly Bowle, Dave Kalmeyer, and Jim Larson Schidler. The final amendment of the 2016-17 budget was reviewed. There was discussion of the revenue and expenditure adjustments that affect the ending fund balance. The committee reviewed the 2017-18 budget. There was some discussion of the per pupil funding increase of $120, declining enrollment, and salaries and benefits based on the new negotiated agreements. Revenue from the enhancement levy are also budgeted for instructional materials and bus purchases. The committee reviewed a recommendation to purchase four of the buses that the district is currently leasing. The purchase will be made from the general fund and could be reimbursed by a future bond issue if approved by the community. The committee also reviewed a recommendation to lease 10 additional buses consisting of seven ortho buses and three regular buses. The lease is within the budgeted enhancement levy allocation for bus leases and purchase. The recommendation will go to the board for approval at the meeting of June 20- The recommendation will go to the board for approval at the meeting of June twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen. Meeting was adjourned at eleven oh seven a.m.
Thank you so much, Dr. Weaver. Moving on to item number three zero zero point one seven, start monthly report. Mrs. Medel?
As required by federal law, each of you received a copy of the financial report, and I'm happy to say that they are well underway, uh, to enrolling students for the next, uh, school year and still have some openings if you qualify and have all of your documentation. Believe it or not, our family social service workers do work during the summer interviewing parents and making sure all of that documentation is in place so that when school starts, they're ready to go.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mrs. Medel. Moving on to item number three zero one point one seven, superintendent report. Dr. Harmala?
Yes, thank you, President Walker. Good evening, everybody. I have three items to report on this evening. First, summer school starts tomorrow. Our Smart Summer Education Camp for grades one through five will run through July the twenty-seventh. This year, it'll be hosted at P D Graham Elementary, and will run Monday through Thursday from eight thirty until noon, and we have three hundred and twenty-six students enrolled. We're fully enrolled and have a waiting list. Our Mars Summer Education Camp for students in grade six through eight will also start tomorrow and run through the end of July. It will be held at Franklin Middle School, Monday through Thursday, from eight thirty until eleven thirty a.m. Again, we're fully enrolled and have a waiting list. There are a hundred and seventy-six students enrolled. And our Priority Summer Schools for kindergarten through fourth grade will run tomorrow through July twenty-seventh, Monday through Thursday, and we have programs running at Hicks, Hoover, and Schweitzer Elementarys. All summer schools will be closed the week of July fourth, and we will be hosting a parent educational session to assist parents with how to work with their children during the remaining days of summer after summer school ends. The second item is the state school aid bills. There's good news and bad news, and you heard some of that already. Good news does include the increase in foundation allowance of a hundred and twenty dollars per pupil. Uh, de- uh, Deputy Superintendent Larson Schidler shared that. We are hearing in the most recent conference committee report that an additional twenty-five dollars per high school student would be added, and some small increases to career tech ed capital funds. With the shifts, as were mentioned earlier, and the other categorical funds are declining enrollment, we only expect a slight increase somewhere in the range of two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue. Finally, I would like to thank the board, the Human Resources and Support Services team led by Kelly Bowle, and Business Services led by Jim Larson Schidler, and our various negotiating teams for their dedication and their hard work. While we have one more contract to complete, our associations have been tremendous partners in defining how we demonstrate the value we place on our employees through the various terms of our agreed-upon contracts. I am so proud of their collaboration and the teamwork displayed throughout this process. So thank you very much. I appreciate all of you. Thank you, President Walker.
Thank you, um, Dr. Harmala. Moving on to item number three zero two point one seven, citizen comments, non-agenda items. Do you have anyone who wanna make a comment? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to item number three zero three point one seven, review and recommendations, Board of Education. Dr. Weaver?
Thank you, Madam President. I would urge my colleagues on the Board of Education to move slowly during the superintendent process, that we do a lot more digging, um, and, um, looking at candidates. And, uh, I would also urge that we consider, uh, giving ourselves time by appointing an interim superintendent. That's my comment for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mrs. Ms. Heinz.
Um, this was a great meeting today. You guys are doing a fabulous job with the budget. I'd like to congratulate Mr. English. This, uh, district is moving forward, and I definitely like everything that you talked about in our, um, presentation tonight, Mr. Albrecht. So we are really moving forward. Um, they have, uh, um, the scholars of, uh, Glen Banquet's coming up this week and Champions of Wayne, so that's the end of the year. And I wanna say one thing, Dr. Harmala, you are so fabulous and special. You have done so much in this district, the way you guys reorganized everything, and I'm so proud of you. I know it's a tough decision, but you are just awesome. So I really appreciate being able to work with you and the board members. So you've really touched our district in a special way.
Thank you. Mrs. Madison?
It's bittersweet to have to tell Dr. Harmala goodbye, although I know it's more of a farewell than a permanent goodbye, and I just want you to know that you're moving on to a new place, new things, and new roles, but you still will always be here with us, and you've left a very big footprint. And we hope that we can serve you well and carry in all the hard work you've done here forward for a long time.
Thank you. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, um, start with an apology in advance if I mispronounce this name. Mr. Montane and Mr. Spiezak have both, uh, been given awards for the fine work that they do. Mr. Spiezak for three years in a row running, and Mr. Montane his second year in a row. Uh, it speaks well of our support staff. Uh, congratulations to each of those gentlemen. Congratulations, too, to our new assistant principal at Wayne Memorial, Mr. Kevin English, who, uh, I understand is also a school board member in Belleville. That's, that's kinda neat. I'd like to extend my congratulations, uh, on his retirement. Mr. Kalmeyer was here when I joined the board, and, uh, he's been an influence, a positive influence, and a positive contributor to the finance, uh, department, uh, during that entire period, uh, as evidenced by the fact that each of the years that I've been on the board and many years before that as well, uh, the finance, uh, department has won two awards for accounting. Uh, that makes a dozen awards just in my time on the board. So, uh, congratulations to Dave. I hope he enjoys his retirement. Um, and we did learn earlier this month that Dr. Harmala was, uh, going to be leaving us at the end of August. Uh, excuse me if I refer to my notes, but there are a lot of things here that I'd like to get said, and I don't wanna miss anything. This is really bittersweet news. Uh, I wish you well in your new, uh, endeavors in higher education. I know you'll do a great job. At the same time, you're going to be missed here at Wayne Westland. You've been an instrument of change during the time that you've been here, and I jotted down some of the things that came to mind, uh, during the, the period that you've been here. There was a reorganization of central administration, a revision and an updating of the administrative policies for the school district, and also for the board operating procedures. You've also established relations with local and state leaders, and those new relations have given us a preferred seat at the table when items regarding education are being discussed. I recently heard, uh, from Senator Kozowski, uh, that in a, uh, budget committee meeting, when they were putting the final touches on the K-12 budget, that Representative Tim Kelly, uh, made reference to several of the suggestions that you made to him, um, in your endeavor to do the best by our district. Um, you regularly visited our schools and talked freely with our teachers and our students. I think maybe you preferred to talk with the kids more than the teachers. I seem to get that impression from time to time. Um, two of the things that have happened during your tenure here, I think for me are especially significant. The first is the change in the relationship between administration and our employees. You've made it abundantly clear that we value all of our employees. We listen to what they have to say, and we give what they have to say an honest hearing. And that is a, a tremendous, uh, compliment to them, and it's, it's a recognition that's been long overdue. I think this by itself has made the Wayne Westland District a better place to work. I truly believe that. I think back to Mr. Albrecht's presentation earlier today on instructional planning. And if you listen to what he had to say, you can't help but see the trust that we have in our, in our staff and the trust that we have in the professionalism of our staff. And I think that a lot of that is attributed to you, Dr. Harmala. Second, equally important contribution is our strategic plan. Um, I think as you started your tenure here, you realized that we were in need of something like that. To be honest, uh, Mrs. Medel had been saying something like that for some time, but you took the reins and, and, and you drove it. But it's not your plan, and that wasn't the way it was intended to be. It's our plan. It's something that was put together by people in the community, by our teaching staff, by our support staff, our administrators, and certainly by our students. That's the plan that we have, and I think it's well enough in place that even though you're gone and we're gonna miss your leadership, I think we're gonna be able to carry that strategic plan forward. I can't think of any more complimentary thing that we could do for you than to carry out that strategic plan. It has a broad commitment from the community and from everyone else who had a hand in putting that together. And finally, I think it's the understatement of the night, you're going to be missed.
Miss, thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you. I also would like to congratulate Gino Montane and Tony Spiezak for, uh, the awards they won tonight. Uh, they always do a great job for us, and we're very grateful and lucky to have them on our team. I would like to thank the negotiating teams on both sides of the aisle for moving forward and getting, uh, everything that the board had hoped in these agreements. I know there's one outstanding, in terms of attracting new people, creating stability in our workforce, doing it within the, uh, fiscal parameters that we had to operate in. Very pleased with, with the way that, that's all coming together. Uh, I'd like to congratulate Mr. English, uh, in his new role, wish him well. I think we're lucky to have him as well. Uh, I'd like to thank all of the, in our, in our list tonight, and I know that, uh, most of the citizens aren't going to be able to see this, but the Wayne Memorial, uh, Zebra Safari received donations from one hundred and seven different business and individual entities. And as I look at, uh, the several pages of generosity, uh, towards that program, I just, I just wanted to say that, uh, uh, they're obviously all giving back to the community, and it's very appreciated. And with respect to Dr. Harmala, I've only had six months with you, but, uh, I was a fan of yours as a citizen of the community, and, uh, I couldn't say it any better than Mr. Buckaloo had to say. But I will say that when you came to the Wayne Westland School District, you had many other choices. You could have gone to other districts, and you decided to come to Wayne Westland. And I think you decided to come here because, in fact, I think in your own words, you said it was a perfect fit for you. And of course, that turned out to be correct. And, uh, uh, what Ms. Madison said tonight, uh, with the cabinet that you put together and the executive team you put together, uh, I have complete faith that, uh, the work that we've all done won't be lost, and I wish you well. And I know that, just like the students that come through the school district, you're taking your opportunities and moving forward, and that's what we're all about here. So, congratulations to you. Uh, I'm very happy for you. I wish you nothing but the best. And I know that we're going to be able to attract somebody, uh, uh, in the future that has the same commitment to the school district that you had, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Um, Ms. Medel?
Thank you. I'm not gonna take a lot of time and be flowery. I'm holding to my statement that I sent you probably November after you started. You've made my job as a trustee a lot easier than it has been in the past. And there'll be plenty of time, it's not like you're leaving at the end of the month, for other things to say, but that's what comes to mind. It was my first impression, and it's my lasting impression. So, I do wanna thank Mr. Albrecht, though, for doing double duty these last couple months. He has survived, and, you know, that's, uh, that was a, a yeoman's job there, being the principal of a high school and still doing your job as assistant superintendent. And you did it without figuring out how to clone yourself. 'Cause I was hoping you'd come up with that formula, 'cause I really need a clone some days. But I appreciate the fine job that you did in both positions, and that wasn't easy. There's never enough money. Even though we've got an influx of money coming towards us, there still isn't never enough money, but at least we've been able to share some of, um, the wealth, and that's it being quotation marks, by the way, uh, that we have received from the citizens in the way of tax money. I'm, I'm glad we were able to eliminate the tiered system of contract because when we had to institute it, I really didn't like it, but it was something we needed to do in order to make the contracts work for us, and I'm glad it's gone away now. It's a lot fairer when everybody is paid equal, uh, for the job that they're doing. Don't forget, people, we've got meet up and eat programs going this summer again, and I'm sure you can find a list on our, um, website, 'cause I know we got a flyer, and I'm pretty sure we've sent information home in newsletters and e-blasts to parents to remind them, uh, of where these locations are throughout the district. So, meet up and eat, and have a safe summer.
Thank you, Mrs. Medel. Um, I just wanna say that, um, I respect and echo, um, my fellow colleagues on the board, but I also wanna say and give a reassurance to our listening audience and everyone in here. Um, Dr. Harmala is still in her seat and still working hard until the end of August. And so there, uh, won't be any lax or change in how we've been operating the business of school. Um, the biggest job that a trustee can have is picking a superintendent. Um, some school boards do it often. This school board has been lucky that we have had long-term superintendents and haven't had to do it as often, but it's a job that I and the rest of my board members, or the rest of the board members, do not take lightly. So even though we have to start the process, because it's a long process when getting a, a, a company and, and going through everything, it's nothing that we will jump into and be lax about it or just trying to hurry up and get someone in place. We're gonna make sure that some, the person that comes here has the same values and the same thought process that we have in place and that we, and can enhance those. And so it won't be a rush deal. Um, if, for instance, candidates come and we're not, we'll just keep on going until we get the right one, however the process goes, but it will not be entered into lightly. So I just wanna make sure that we have the reassurance that just because we have had a little bit of kink in our chain, we are still rolling and moving as a district, and we're still moving forward, and we still have our eyes on the prize. And, um, I have a lot more to say about Dr. Harmala, but I'm gonna wait until she officially is on her way out the door. So with that being said, um, I appreciate each and every one of you for coming out this evening, um, taking your time out to be at the meeting. Everyone have a safe and productive summer, and at this time, I'll take the motion of adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Medel, or Mrs. Madison, supported by Ms. Heinz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.